We'll get rolling. We have Downtown Colorado Inc. this evening to talk about urban renewal authorities and some economic development initiatives that we might be able to undertake. And we have Bill Schrum from Downtown Colorado Inc. is going to lead off our presentation this evening. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Bill and say, Bill, have at it.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you very much, Jim, and I appreciate you, Mayor and trustees, being available for the workshop today. I'm really thrilled to have the rest of the panel that we've got here joining me. We'll introduce them here in just a second. I see you're sharing slides. If you don't mind doing that for us, we can. Otherwise, I can share our presentation.
We can go through the, since they're already up on the screen.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, if you don't mind, next slide there, please.
If I could interrupt, I only have given Bill permissions to unmute yourself once it gets timed for other colleagues to do that. If you'll let me know the names, then I'll do that at that time.
Sure. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Downtown Colorado Inc., DCI is a nonprofit member-based organization, and we've been around since 1982. We were founded to be able to support urban renewal authorities with advisory work, educational events, much like this one. And over time, we've expanded to serve the rest of the Title 31 districts that also fall into that same category statutorily. So we help business improvement districts, downtown development authorities, and really pretty much anyone who has a downtown that is interested either in one of these districts or in the same sort of economic and urban development concerns that these districts often are involved with. So that's broadened our scope quite a bit. We worked with several. I think at last count, it was like a, we've had work or members with 160 different communities in Colorado. So that's, that's a lot of Colorado, but only in Colorado. So we don't, we don't really do too much outside of the state. We do have a couple of other features. If Jim hasn't mentioned, the Colorado Challenge Program to you all, Silt is one of our members in the Challenge Program this year as a tier-one community, which has got the most experience and work with myself and one of our other partners. So we'll be working with you quite a bit through a series of workshops here, and we're really excited to be working with the town and really helping your URA get jump-started here. Next slide, please. And to orient you to our position and a philosophy that we like to bring to all of our work, this is a great quote from Peter Kagayama, For the Love of Cities. He writes, "The people are longing for a place not only to live, but also to love." And that, that really speaks to a lot of where DCI comes from when it comes to how we approach these, these challenges and what's going on in communities. It's recognizing that people, you know, genuinely and very intrinsically care about the places that are near and dear to their heart, especially in communities like yours. And previously, my experience, I was previously the Assistant Town Manager in Eagle, Colorado. So I know what it's like to be on the Western Slope and in a relatively small town. And when the downtown is what you pass every day, going for coffee, or going to work, or seeing your friends, or whatever, it's, it's the nexus of everything. And when you care about it, you really care. And we recognize that, and we foster that. And, and we like to ask questions and be able to help in ways that are unique to that level of care, because we know that not every community is the same. So it's all about making a place that you can love and one that you can really have pride in. That's, that's our philosophy. And we, I think, have a pretty good track record of following through on that. Next slide. A couple of the programs that I haven't mentioned that we cover, like I said, we are a member-based organization, and you all are members. The membership includes up to 10 seats. So Jim has shared several folks' names with, with us. And so we want to be sure that as many of you in the community that are interested in all the other resource guides and, and access that membership gets you, that we can get you access to that. Advisory services are pretty key, like what we're doing right here, being able to help communities get their, their districts in good order. Tax increment financing is really the, the big lever that we like to talk about as a tool. DDAs and URAs are able to use that. In the Game is our annual conference, which as a part of the Challenge Community Program, hopefully, we see you guys there. I'd like to see a lot of folks there, because the Challenge Communities present and network and have access to a lot of other resources there in our Challenge Workshops. And I've mentioned the Challenge Community Accelerator Program already. So if you have more information or questions about that, certainly let me know. And, and lastly, my last bit here, again, going to the elements that DCI likes to speak about. When it comes to how do we make, or how do we have a process that helps communities understand what it is to build great spaces that you love, it really comes down to three different elements of place that, that we like to focus on. It's the place-making, place activation, and place management. And place-making really has to do with what it is in the design form, and the way that things are used, and, and local character, especially again, on the West Slope, Western Slope, we see, you know, Mountain West sort of aesthetic, and, and certain designs for, for downtowns that really make them stand out, make them places where you, you want to go. The activation part is the second part of it. And what is it, what does it take for businesses to be activated? How can you get people walking by their storefronts? What, what is it to have the community stop and gather in certain places, whether it be for a, a local farmer's market, or an event that you put on? And, you know, referring back to the place-making, is the place made in such a way that really fosters that organically? That's, that's the best-case scenario. And the third piece of this is the place management, and it's the district or organizations that really helped the first two happen, right? And an urban renewal authority is a, a very important district that can help foster the first two, especially when you don't have any other districts in your community. Urban renewal authorities in rural spaces can, can really do a lot of heavy lifting here. And so the organization that we're talking about, and you're going to see some examples here from, from Canyon City and from others, the, the urban renewal authority really serves as the catalyst for having public-private partnerships provide great spaces. And when they develop things, they're going to develop them with the community in mind, and they're going to develop them in ways that activate inherently and naturally, and in ways that your community is going to want to do. So these are the three places, elements of place that you're going to see as a theme throughout the presentation today. And I would encourage you to think about, as an urban renewal authority, as, as the commissioners of an urban renewal authority, what would it look like for you to play a role in fostering each of these three different elements of place? Next slide. So as I said, with the place management, the, the goal here, excuse me, the goal here is to be able to understand what it is to maintain or enhance the level of service that a space or a downtown or a district is, is providing. And there's obviously different levels to that. But you can put that in perpetuity and have an organization that's quite durable through the documents and the organizing structure of, of whatever district or organization you form. The policies are really important. What are your policies, both protecting financially, and how are they instigating private sector engagement? We're going to speak about your policies a little bit, and Troy is a real expert in that regard. And the financing structures that, again, really motivate the private sector to step forward and, and play the big role here. This isn't necessarily about government going in and building all the things. I don't think anyone has the resources to do that. It's, it's really about instigating the private sector to, to step forward and find good value doing the development they want to do, but also in alignment with the community's ideals and goals. And we accomplish all of that through ongoing education and engagement, and especially, you know, interfacing with elected officials and key stakeholders in the community. It's, it's vital as a part of this process. So I think this is my last slide here, but I want to kind of detail what it is we're going to be covering with you all today. So this is our Tax Increment Finance 101, but built around urban renewal authorities. And we always love to start off with a case study. And we're really fortunate to have Rick Harmon here from Canyon City, speaking about his experience with the Canyon City URA, and a great project that they've accomplished, but how they can, again, use urban renewal authorities in relatively rural spaces to really help make some fantastic projects. And that case study is going to be great to reference throughout the rest of the conversation without having to get into the details there in Silt, per se, and talk about hypotheticals. We've got Angela High, who's going to be able to speak too. What is tax increment finance? And make sure that everyone's very clear about what that is, and, and how it works, and who can use it, and why your urban renewal authorities are unique in that regard. And then Troy Bernberg's going to speak for, speak about the vision and policies that you can adopt, and what it is to be able to work with other boards and consider what some of the financing arrangements that are typical, that you would want to have in mind when it comes to getting any big projects off the ground, and who you need to reach out to, and make sure that you've got great partnerships and organizational relationships with those other organizations to make sure that your, your policies are robust and your organization is well-represented. So that's the agenda for today. And at this point, I'll say next slide and turn it over to Rick. Thank you so much for, for coming here today, Rick.
Hello, everybody. Nice to meet you all. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. And to follow up on Bill's comment about DCI, if you, if you haven't been to one of their events, particularly in the game, I've got a new, a small business liaison that works for me, and he's, he's, he's raved about In the Game and about other DCI events, because you really get an opportunity to see firsthand and talk to people firsthand who have done what you, done what you're trying to do, or you can brainstorm together. But I've never been in a, been at a function that was so close-knit and almost forced community, I guess you could say, but it works really well. And you, you create relationships with these people that are amazing. So I highly encourage it. But my perspective on urban renewal, I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Canyon City, started about four and a half years ago, right when, right when the state, right when the federal government closed down businesses because of COVID is when I started my job. And that made me kind of more of a psychologist than anything in the beginning days, but at that time, we were also creating the Urban Renewal Authority, and had a very dire need for it. Now, to give you a little background, this is, we created it from scratch. Canyon City is the fifth-oldest city in the state of Colorado. We are along the Arkansas River, along US 50. Canyon City had a railroad go through the Royal Gorge that put us in proximity to be, or not proximity, but in, gave us the capability of becoming a regional commercial center, a regional commercial hub for a lot of the mining communities. That includes Victor and Cripple Creek, Leadville, Hartsell, you name it, everything that, everything that the railroad could touch. We were somewhat of a hub, too, particularly west of here. So starting off very strong, strong in agriculture, strong in manufacturing, strong in healthcare, strong in just all of that rural, regional hub that, uh, skill set that a community is good for. So over time, railroad was replaced by automobiles. Commerce went from rural communities more into urban areas, specifically the I-25 corridor, the I-70 corridor. 1950s, US 50 used to go right through Main Street of Canyon City, but they, in the 50s, they moved it one block to the south. So now transportation went south of Main Street and cut off basically Main Street from the river. So we had some significant challenges, especially that the creation of the I-25 corridor and movement of commerce to the Front Range. The I-25 corridor is geographically cut Canyon City off from the Front Range, even though we're a Front Range community. So we've gone for 70-plus years or so as a community, trying to figure out really what we stand for, very gradual decline in industry, very stagnant growth at best over the last debt, number of decades. So really, we needed a tool to figure out what to do. We needed plans first. And those plans, you see here, you've got the Centennial Park Master Plan, River Cor, Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, the Downtown Strategic Plan. We also had the US 50 Pedestrian Crossing Plan, East Access Control Plan. For a while, Canyon City was creating plan after plan after plan, and it got to the point where the community was kind of like, we got to do something here. We've got all these plans, but nothing's happening. We had no tools, basically. We were competing against Front Range communities, larger Front Range communities. It was much harder for us to attract industry, to attract businesses, to attract retail. And we ended up becoming a bedroom community that had to rely on its assets, and those assets were the river, basically, river and outdoor activities. That turned us into a tourist community. So we've evolved from a regional, regional hub to a tourist community that now needs to survive eight months out of the year, since tourism only lasts for about four. So how do we do it? We opted for an urban renewal authority, primarily because that allowed us to, gave us the best mechanism to help all of the areas in the community that needed that assistance. So if you want to go to the next slide. So the Urban Renewal Authority here spreads from our downtown along the US 50 corridor, up and down the Ninth Street, I, uh, excuse me, Colorado 115 corridor. And that is really to capture our historic district, as well as our US 50 East Access Corridor that was identified as being very blighted, and also our riverfront. So it's a bigger area than most urban renewal authorities like to deal with. And we're talking about adding a new area as well. But that's really the, what we chose to do primarily because we had a few different pockets of blight that needed to be taken care of. So the, one of the key areas was our downtown. When we created the Urban Renewal Authority, it wasn't very simple. The URA, you've got one already, which is good. But in our case, we have a very conservative, tax-averse community. And right before we started to put together the Urban Renewal Authority, the Fire District was successful at requesting a new mill from our, from our citizens, from our voters. And that the concept of tax increment caused a lot of confusion, and the firefighters honestly thought that the Urban Renewal Authority is going to take their mill levy. That wasn't the case at all, but that's, that's the argument that they made. Now, the owners of the Hotel St. Cloud that we're looking at here, a rendering of it, participated in the project, participated in us creating the Urban Renewal Authority, because they saw it as a mechanism that they needed as well to help with their gap financing. They understood the concept, and they helped with it. But also, the fact that this project was in the works made it difficult for us to create a renewal authority, because people were saying, well, if they're already in the process, in process of development, why do we need the Urban Renewal Authority? So it's kind of a double-edged sword to have them involved. But it was a project, or is a project, that specifically targets blight in our downtown. And the Hotel St. Cloud identified as was a standing picture of blight in our downtown. It was at the risk of being demolished, which would have left a huge gaping hole in our downtown. So it made a lot of sense to include them. When we began the process, however, none of us really understood the process. You know, we understood the concept, but we didn't understand the process. So if you want to go to the next screen. We asked the, we asked Unbridled Corporation. Now, we worked with Ricker Cunningham to create the Urban Renewal Authority, very knowledgeable consultants. If you haven't worked with them, I recommend it, but there's, I know there's others out there, too, who are very knowledgeable. But Ricker Cunningham worked with us and Unbridled Corporation to put together an, an application package. The package included this, which is a sources and uses statement for this project. It also included a 10-year pro forma. It also included anticipated valuation increases. It included a, a strong narrative. It included corporate structure. It gave us the entire picture of how this project was going to work. Now, the thing that we really realized during this part of the, part of the process is that the Urban Renewal Authority gave us an opportunity to know a heck of a lot more about a developer and a development than anything we've ever seen coming to us as a municipality. We had much more ability in these cases, in this case in particular, but in all of our redevelopment projects, to have much more private confidential conversations that get into the weeds of these developments. Typically, in a, in a municipal agreement, a development project, it's real estate-based. Somebody will contact the planning department, and they'll contact Public Works, or contact the building official, ask a few questions, and they'll make a determination, determination whether they buy the property or not and move forward. But the municipality really has no way of knowing whether they could pull it off or not. This was a huge benefit to be able to go through this kind of a process. And as it turns out, it gave us credibility, not us credibility, but it gave us a belief that this system works very well. So we're looking at this project right now that was listed here as $11.6 million. You'll see a different number in a bit. $11.6 million renovation project with an old hotel that was about to be demolished. So if you go to the next screen, we'll talk about how it was evaluated. So Ricker Cunningham took the information they provided and did some market analysis, straight market analysis, very simple stuff to do, of the project based on what it would cost to rent this space. So they're doing it in terms of rental, because Unbridled Holdings will hold the assets and the operations inside of it, the restaurants, the bars, the hotel, will rent their space from an unbridled holding. The interesting, you see a value now of $8.8 million. That's basically taking the square footage for the hotel space at a rate per square foot, restaurant space rate per square foot, those types of things, and coming up with an $8.8 million, $8.8 million value. Now, I mentioned that this helped us realize that this is a very valuable system. This is a credible system, because when Unbridled came to us initially, they came to us with an $8.9 million development project, not 11.6. They increased it to 11.6 in order to add more amenities for what would be considered a Class IV hotel. So they, they increased the value by upping the quality of the hotel, but the initial value that they came up with was almost identical to what Ricker Cunningham came up with in their evaluation. So that, that to me was a very telling point. And it gave us, gave this entire process of tax increment financing and evaluating these projects, a whole lot more credibility than we anticipated there being. So it was really kind of a cool process. So if you want to go to the next screen. Evaluating what they provided with us, provided to us, and what Ricker Cunningham came up with a valuation, came up with a gap. So we've got $8.8 million project, or excuse me, value. And we've got $11.4 million. That was, I mentioned, you're going to see a different number. It actually is $11.6 million. So that gave us a $2.8 million gap, although this is showing the 2.6. And they requested $1.2 million in, in tax increment financing. So that was really another telling point, that, all right, we've identified, just based on value, that there's a 2.6, 2.8 million dollar gap. The developer's requested 1.2. That means he's putting a lot more of his assets, his own assets into the project. Now, what we also need to determine what qualifies as an, as a, as a reimbursable expense. So that's going to be something that's related to blight. It's going to be something that's related to, in our case, we've got demolition, environmental remediation, historic preservation. In other words, what are those key items, whether it's infrastructure, or, and if you consider the building itself, infrastructure and asset, what's it going to take to bring this back to a marketable project, a marketable, marketable asset? And that's what we can, that's what we concluded as being qualifying expenses. Now, I've got one in here, too. You can see it on there. It's called market risk. In this case, the case of the Hotel St. Cloud, we didn't have a valuation on the market risk. We just knew that there was risk because of existing blighted area, existing blighted building, competition with the Front Range communities of Colorado Springs and Pueblo, put a little bit more risk on there. In the case of another project, Pharisee Ford, they had a post-construction valuation done, appraisal done of their property while they were in development. And the, the appraiser identified something called external obsolescence, and he put a value on it. External obsolescence was a devaluing of the property simply because of the blighted neighborhood it was in. That was enough for Pharisee Ford to come back to us and request more money, simply because that was a, was a, was a valuation put on exactly why we needed tax increment financing. It was a, it was a value put on blight in a neighborhood that others in the community, including county commissioners, didn't necessarily consider as blighted. But it was a, dollar for dollar, this is what's happening to the value of this building, and it, and it created a gap with that. In this case, the market, market risk was a little less, little more nebulous. We didn't have a value on that, but we did authorize them for a $1.2 million, $1.2 million tax increment redevelopment agreement, or reimbursement agreement. If you go to the next screen, you'll see that. So 11.6, $8.8 million market valuation, gap is 2.8, and then the funding request was 1.2. Interesting enough, the developer is now at $17.5 million, because he came up with a lot more cost tied to asbestos, structural integrity, long after he entered into a redevelopment agreement with us, a reimbursement agreement. He could go back and request more. He hasn't, but in theory, he could. So if you go to the next screen. What we have now is really one of the, this is the biggest catalyst project in our downtown. It's taking care of blight remediation, historic restoration, downtown revitalization. We're talking about, Unbridled also owns another restaurant in town and a number of other buildings. They're going to have upwards of 75 employees. They're at about 50 right now without the hotel being completely open yet. It increased outside investment as other investors came to town. They realized what's happening there. We now have new buyers for a 24, or excuse me, 2,000-acre development on the east side of town. We've got more restaurants, way more vibrancy downtown than we ever had before. Plus, we've got more apartment units downtown because of this drawing other investors to the community. So it's been a, it's been a, an amazingly successful project, and the hotel's not even open yet, probably not until February or March. So happy to entertain any questions you've got, but that's the end of my section of this presentation. So back to Bill, I guess.
All right. Yeah, I, I guess we, if there are any questions for Rick specifically, we can take a moment and address those for many of the commissioners.
I do have a question. So for the tax reimbursement process, is it out of the sales taxes, was the business is open? And is that like a reimbursement that happens each month? Or can you clarify on how and when the reimbursement takes place, or if that's something that we establish ourselves as, as a board?
Yeah, we, we entered into an agreement with them that honors sales tax and property tax. They haven't started collecting anything. Pharisee Ford has started collecting sales tax. A Holiday Inn Express has started collecting sales tax. That is done on a quarterly basis. We gave them a form that says, give us your three months of sales tax remittance. And then it has, since we are state-collected, sales tax goes through our finance department in particular, so they verify the actual submissions of sales tax, or receipts of sales tax. or receipts of sales tax, and then we'll reimburse the sales tax from that. So, basically quarterly. We haven't had, we've only had one developer so far request property tax reimbursement, and that's annually.
Okay, and I'm thinking when it's satisfied for the agreed upon amount, then they go back to regular, the regular schedule with no reimbursement?
After that, after X number of years, yeah, they'll go back without reimbursement. You have to remember too, in terms of the reimbursement, they need to generate the increment. You know, we don't promise them a certain, you know, we have an agreement with them that says one point two million dollars, but if they can't generate the sales tax revenue, or they can't generate the property tax increment, then they get what they have coming to them, what they have available to them.
Is there like an expiration in time of how long you can have that being reimbursed for?
We entered a ten-year agreement with them. It's going to, it's going to differ from urban renewal to urban renewal. A lot of, a lot of urban renewal authorities will have an urban renewal area that'll have like a twenty-five year clock. We have a twenty-five year clock on our area, but individual projects in there, we have a reimbursement agreement for about ten years. They get one hundred percent of the increment, but only for about ten years, and then we'll get everything in the Urban Renewal Authority after that ten years.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Sure.
My question is about job creation. Where does that factor into the project analysis? So, when I look at the development economics summary slide, I don't see anything there that quantifies the value of those jobs being created. How does that factor in?
We did not use the value of job creation in terms of the reimbursement or redevelopment agreement. That was part of the narrative that was provided with the application. You know, from an economic development perspective, it was really more of a, we struggle in our downtown with getting these historic buildings to modern code. And, and we have, we now have facade grant, life safety grant, building systems grant that come out of tax increment that are used just for the purpose of renovating the building. So, and we haven't looked at it necessarily in terms of Pharisee Ford either, in terms of the job creation, but we know there's going to be jobs with it.
Okay, so it's supplemental?
Supplemental.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions. Yeah, thank you. So, and again, thank you, Rick. Hotel St. Cloud was a downtown excellence award-winning project, and I'm sure you will continue to end up winning a few more awards for the stuff that you're doing down there in Canyon City, but it's great to see.
Hasn't been yet, hasn't been yet, but I'm going to submit it. So, yeah.
Okay. I would imagine it's a pretty good candidate for it. But yeah, you're doing some great work there. And again, you know, we wanted to highlight this case study in particular because, you know, Canyon City, as Rick sort of started off with, you know, they benefit from being near, you know, Colorado Springs, and they, they have a lot going for them, but at the same time, they didn't have a lot of, of organizations that could do this kind of work until the URA came around. And so, again, it's, it's a great example of how the URA in a rural setting can really be the catalyst for a lot of that great work. So, speaking about, a little bit more about how URAs work specifically, it's great to have Angela Hi here with us. She is a lawyer with Brownstein, and really, really an expert on this particular subject and one of our go-tos. So, thank you for taking some time, and Angela, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Hi, and I'm an attorney with Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek. My practice involves a significant amount of public finance and land use, and we work with a variety of urban renew, excuse me, of urban renewal authorities around the state of Colorado. And for this portion of the presentation, I'd like to give you just a little bit of a TIF one-on-one to refresh everyone on how all of this works. And the way that I'd like to start is by comparing an urban renewal authority to other downtown organizations and the tools that they can use. So, what we've got here on the screen is the differences between a business improvement district, a downtown development authority, and an urban renewal authority. And these are all types of entities, quasi-governmental entities that can be created in order to leverage their tools for their purposes. And when it comes to an urban renewal authority, what distinguishes it from these other two is, first of all, its purpose, which is to prevent and to remediate blights. And you can see how that is elaborated here in this slide, which is to eliminate and prevent the development or spread of slum and blighted areas, encourage needed urban rehabilitation, provide further redevelopment, providing public improvements, encouraging rehabilitation and repair. And, and the reason that I go through all of those is because technically speaking, its purpose is not economic development. Usually, it is the hope that economic development will result from all of these efforts and from fulfilling these purposes. But that's one of the reasons why job creation is not typically listed or accounted for, because it's not technically one of the purposes. An urban renewal authority is just one of the benefits that is expected to accrue upon the accomplishment of its purposes. It also uses TIF primarily, tax increment finance, in order to fund its projects. A business improvement district can levy a mill levy. An urban renewal authority does not have that authority. They cannot levy taxes. Technically, a downtown development authority cannot levy taxes, but the statute contemplates that a municipality would levy a five mil, up to five mils of a mill levy on its behalf. But a DDA can also use tax increment, and it works just a little bit differently for a downtown development authority. But for the URA, TIF is really the main strategy. Next slide, please. Thank you. So, just digging into this a little bit further as to how an urban renewal authority works, is that it covers an entire municipality. So, a downtown development authority, which is the other entity that can leverage TIF, it is confined generally to the central business district of a municipality, and that's defined in the statute as the historic center of business. There is only one DDA within any municipal boundary. An urban renewal authority does not have this level of restriction. It covers the entire municipality, although that does not mean that when it is created, that TIF starts throughout the entire municipality. What it means is that the urban renewal authority is empowered to create urban renewal areas throughout that municipality, and there could be any number of those urban renewal areas. And each of those can authorize tax increment finance in order to prevent or remedy blight within the boundaries of those areas. The next slide, please. So, an urban renewal authority can't do this in a vacuum. All of the things that I'm talking about in terms of creating urban renewal areas, it must do in conjunction with the Board of Trustees and with the Planning Commission. So, the Board of Trustees is the body that is responsible for causing the preparation of an urban renewal plan and for actually approving an urban renewal plan. And an urban renewal plan is what defines an area where TIF can be authorized. It can also define areas without TIF, but that's typically what the plan is created for, to define an area that authorizes TIF and its council, that is, or the Board of Trustees that is the party that is responsible for doing that, not the URA. The Board of Trustees is also empowered to cooperate with the URA in a variety of ways, and it can use its own powers, such as the power of eminent domain or other types of powers if that is what they decide to do in order to acquire property. And they can also enter into agreements with the urban renewal authority, which is important because the town is also a taxing body. And for the urban renewal authority to be able to collect any of the TIF from any taxing body, including the Board of Trustees, the urban renewal authority must enter into an agreement with that taxing authority. And so, that's what we're getting at here with discussing agreements between the Board and the urban renewal authority. There are also other types of cooperation agreements that can be entered into in order to further the purposes of urban renewal. But that's the main agreement that they must enter into in order to, in order for a URA to leverage any of that TIF from the town. And then, the URA also works with the Planning Commission, which is responsible for reviewing any urban renewal authority, specifically with an eye to whether it is consistent with the comprehensive plan that has been adopted for the town. They can also consider projects within any of the urban renewal districts. And just to kind of clarify here, because we use a variety of different terms, when we say urban renewal district, we are typically referring to an urban renewal area, and that is an area that is defined within a plan. And unfortunately, URA also has, or it is the same acronym as Urban Renewal Authority, which is why it can start to get a little bit confusing. But what we're talking about here is an urban renewal area defined within a plan. Next slide, please. Just a couple of other things to go over. I've already discussed that the authority's boundaries are the same as the municipality, and it could have multiple areas. What the statute requires is that those areas be narrowly drawn to accomplish the purposes of the act, and really, that is a decision for the Board of Trustees to decide as to whether or not the boundaries are narrowly drawn in order to prevent and remediate blight as it has been found. Usually, these areas have to be within the municipal boundaries, but with the consent of the county and with the property owners and owner, holders of mortgage interests in unincorporated county, some of those areas can also be incorporated as well if they're contiguous with the municipality. Next slide, please. So, the star of the show is TIF. And what I'm representing for you first, in order to explain how this tool works, is a world without TIF. So, this, you can imagine, is a chart for a property that has some of the factors of blight. And I've been throwing that word around, and just to take a moment to talk about it a little bit. Blight is a term that is defined in the statute. What it means is a variety of factors that, in combination, create a blighted area, which is something for the Board of Trustees to determine based on whether or not those factors have been found to exist. And those factors, they do include some of the things that we typically think of as blight, so deteriorating buildings and, you know, general dilapidation. But they also include a variety of other things, such as maybe a need for environmental remediation or an inadequate amount of infrastructure or a lot layout that is not conducive to development, or a street layout. So, it's a variety of factors that hinder development, and that's really what we're getting at when we're talking about blight. We're talking about hindrances to development. So, this is a property where there are some factors of blight, where there are hindrances to development. And what we often see happen, or typically see happen in that case without any kind of development or redevelopment, is that over any given twenty-five year period, the property maybe increases in value slightly along with the biannual reassessment of the property values, but the value of the property typically stays pretty flat. And we've seen that happen in plenty of instances too, where a blighted property or a property with hindrances to development really just stays flat in terms of value, or actually decreases in value. But for the sake of argument, let's talk about this property that slowly increases in value over twenty-five years, or, or is expected to. And both of these bars, both the dark purple and the light purple, they represent what the taxing bodies that levy a mill levy on that property will receive over that twenty-five year period. So, that, based on that assessed value on the chart. So, it stays relatively flat for twenty-five years, and they collect just based on that value. So, next slide, please. Let's talk about a world with TIF. So, in this case, what has happened is that the urban renewal authority has said, well, this property is not generating very much property tax revenue over the next twenty-five years. It would if it were to be developed. And it would be ideal if we could harness the property taxes that would be collected in the future based on the increase in value that that development would bring and use it now in order to help that development get off the ground in the first place. And that is what tax increment financing is. It is leveraging the increase in value that is created by a development in order to remove the hindrances to that development in the first place. And the result is a chart that looks something like this. So, we've still got the two bars. That purple bar represents that base value, what would have happened in the world without TIF. And that base value is important because it represents what all of the taxing bodies that levy a mill levy would continue to collect and will continue to collect even when tax increment finance is in play. So, from a revenue perspective, the taxing bodies in an urban renewal area are no worse off than they would have been in the absence of urban renewal because they continue to collect that base. But what that purple line represents on top, the light purple line, I should say they're both purple, what that light purple line represents is the increase in value that is created by the development. And the urban renewal authority can pledge all of that increase above the base to the developer of that property or to the property owner in order to get that development off the ground. So, here, we've got an increase in value that is significantly higher, and that's the idea, over that twenty-five year period. The urban renewal authority has the discretion to decide how much they're going to share and for how long. They've got that maximum of twenty-five years, but as Rick said, there could be an agreement for only ten years. There can be an agreement for less than a hundred percent of the TIF. So, you know, in that delta between that six and that ten million, you don't have to pledge the entire four million. You can say, well, you can get fifty percent of it, or whatever the taxing bodies have agreed to share. And then at the end of it, everyone wins because at the end of the twenty-five year period, the base and the increment are the same, which really just means that the taxing entities now receive everything as base, and there is no more tax increment, but they continue to receive, or now they receive that higher increased value created by that increase in value of the property that was created by the development. So, it's a bit of a circular concept in that we're leveraging dollars that don't exist yet, but that wouldn't exist without having pledged them in the first place. And it's a little unfortunate that it's called tax increment financing because what I've been talking about with these two charts isn't really tax, it's value. We're not talking about any increase in taxes or in tax rates. Can I get that next slide, please? Yeah. So, so this lays out what these principles are. So, increment is not a new tax, and the urban renewal authority, as I mentioned previously, does not have the power to levy a new tax. They also do not increase tax rates on any property. It's entirely about the increase in tax revenue that is generated by the increase in value of the property. So, as a property becomes more valuable, then that tax increment is generated and can be shared back. And, you know, it's, it's predicting the future. When an agreement is entered into with a developer, the tax increment often has not been generated yet. And so, it's a projection as to how far or to how much in the, the property will increase in value in the future and what that will be realized as in terms of revenue that can be shared. And that's typically the reason why an urban renewal authority does not commit to giving a certain numerical value. Usually, the agreement is something more like, we'll share back. we'll share back whatever your development generates for the next 15 years, and set a maximum of $10 million, or whatever that maximum might be. So it's not a tax. It's all about the increase in value. It's leveraging that increase in value. And it's based on the principle that growth pays its own way. Typically, what is shared back is the value of that specific property, that specific development. And there are various tools that can be used, including bonds, that can realize that value at the beginning of the process, instead of having to wait for it actually to be generated. Or the developer might just need to wait in order to be reimbursed later on in the process. So, let's see. I think, yes. So that's essentially how tax increment financing works. I just want to address one more concept, and that's the but for, which you may have heard of. The but for is the idea that in the absence of tax increment financing, but for the tax increment financing, a development would not occur, would not get off the ground. And the but for is a good concept. It's a good tool to use when thinking about when using tax increment financing is appropriate. But it's not actually in the statute. So it is the idea that growth pays its own way, but it's not a statutory requirement that the Board of Trustees or the Urban Renewal Authority make a finding that development would not have happened. But typically speaking, because of those hindrances to development, because of those factors, the development is, would either never occur, or would be very unlikely to occur. So that's the one concept I wanted to cover here. And I'd like to turn it over to Troy Bernberg now to talk a little bit more about T I F and the things it can do and the things it cannot do.
Thank you, Angela. Jim, Mayor, Trustees, it's great to be with you this evening. Thank you for your time. Troy Bernberg, I'm Managing Director for Northland Securities. We are a bond underwriting and municipal advisory firm. I've been serving in Colorado for 22 years across the state and have been focusing on development finance specifically over the last 10 years. And I currently represent six D D As and a few U R As in different capacities between advisory and investment banking. And I'm really glad to be a part of the conversation. I've been volunteering my time for a while now with D C I because I believe these tools can be very powerful in communities. And touching on something that Angela said about kind of the circular nature of tax increment, it really is something, it really is that carrot that you dangle out to developers or property owners as a way to incentivize them to improve their property and thereby remediating blight. And so for me, it gives a lot of control to a community using a U R A because you're not just writing blank checks out to developers whoever asks for it. There's due diligence you have to conduct. And through that due diligence and risk management of that due diligence, you're really able to kind of control the type of development that occurs within a plan area or an urban renewal authority. And as I said, you're not writing out blank checks. You really have to ask the applicant, the developer, the property owner to really demonstrate that there's a financing gap, okay? So that's really the first part of risk management. And in my advisory capacity to D D As and U R As, I help them actually put in policy, which I'll touch on in a second. But in my, some of my policy documentation is the applicant has to demonstrate some kind of financing gap in their project. The second bullet point really touches on the partnerships that are really important as you're getting going as a U R A, even in the formation days, okay? Certainly, an attorney like Angela is going to be helpful in getting the documentation ready. I'll touch on a couple of other documents. But the other partnership is someone that's a consultant in public finance, whether it be with an investment bank or otherwise, because you really want to try and understand what the potential is. It might be for a specific property or a particular area. But I have seen some of my clients where they unfortunately got somewhat kind of unrealistic or too liberal of projections in terms of what T I F could do. And so now that that project doesn't come to fruition, one of my clients is dealing with a lot less T I F. And with a lot less T I F, you're just a lot less active and a lot less productive, excuse me, as a U R A. And, you know, I counsel a lot of my clients to be in close discussions with their municipal, community, or economic development departments because this is part of the overall incentive toolbox that a municipality can offer. And I wouldn't say that other incentives are often still necessary, but there are many times where you have to consider another incentive. You know, for example, we don't want to incentivize a tax-exempt or nonprofit organization solely because they won't generate any increased valuation like Angela went over, right? Because they're not taxed, okay? Now, you can have an exempt organization surrounded by other private development that helps generate that increment that you can then use as an incentive, as well as a reimbursement. Next slide. And so, please. And so this really speaks to the spectrum of how U R As can spend their dollars and what that risk looks like, okay? So certainly Angela touched on bonds, and I counsel my clients that bond issues can be an important tool to U R A. It's just not that often of a tool that's used, okay? And there's many reasons for that, primarily because tax increment is a variable revenue source. It's difficult to predict and project. And so bonds typically represent the most risk that a U R A can take. The majority of U R As that I've worked with, either in my day job or on a volunteer basis, most of their business, i.e. investment, is conducted with developer agreements, okay? And a trustee asked a wonderful question earlier about when does that reimbursement occur? And that's a lot of what my policy work concentrates on. I've worked a lot on the West Slope, so I'm familiar with either Canyon City's, you know, anti-tax conservative nature, or the West Slope's conservative nature. And ultimately, developer agreements really do provide a lot of risk management advantages over bonds, right? So in a developer agreement, or development and reimbursement agreement specifically, that's performance-based, okay? So the developer actually has to perform what they said they would do under the agreement. Let's use a certificate of occupancy as a simple kind of flag in the ground. So a lot of the agreements that I work on for my clients will say, all right, well, first we need a C O. The project needs to be complete and occupied. And then that's when the reimbursement occurs. And to the points already discussed, they will be a dollar amount and/or a period in time. So if the increment doesn't reach the dollar amount or doesn't reach the agreed-dollar amount within the time of the agreement, then that's the risk the developer takes, okay? So as Rick touched on, you know, if you agreed on $800,000 of tax reimbursement to a developer or an applicant, and only $700,000 is generated under that agreement, that's all they're going to get. So for me, there's different ways to expend your money. And I think as a U R A, because you don't have the authority to tax, you want to be really thoughtful about not ever giving away 100% of your tax increment to a project, at least not early on in your life cycle, right? You want the revenues of your organization, of your U R A, to be really mature before you start giving out larger percentages of that revenue stream as an incentive. Next slide, please. Okay, so speaking of policy, you know, this is really kind of a list of what you can help program with your tax increment revenue dollars. You know, for me, I do believe that jobs are an important part of these types of projects. But I think Angela touched on a really important part of the statute and why they're not always used as a metric in what gets awarded tax increment as an incentive. For me, I think the facade program is a very popular program among peer U R As and D D As. It's something that revitalizes your downtown corridor. But I will note that new construction will primarily lead to your tax increment dollars. Yes, maybe a facade improvement on one building might move the needle a little bit. But ultimately, as a result of a court case from the Colorado Supreme Court earlier this year, the real news that I took from that decision was that U R As and D D As alike should really principally rely on new construction for their increment. And so that's why it's really important, when you're considering this, to look at projects that aren't, you know, something that you pull out of thin air. You know, when my clients ask me to do projections, one of my first questions is, well, is this something that's actually in the entitlement pipeline? You know, give me an idea of the realistic nature of this project. Because for me, it's important that you don't get overpromised and underdelivered. But there's a lot of different things that you can do with T I F, and this slide really touches on it. Next slide, and I think that's my last slide. So the condition study is one of those big statutory checkmarks of documentation that you need. I consistently argue on the behalf of these really important tools that they're not that expensive to put into place. Yes, their U R A in tax increment is a nuanced subject, and it does require a lot of education. But ultimately, putting a D D A in place, or U R A in more particular, you know, it's a relatively small dollar amount to add an incentive that your peer communities, your peer neighboring communities may not have. Or if they do have these tools, maybe it presents an opportunity for S I L to provide them in a more functional and efficient manner. Communications are exceptionally important with U R As in particular. That's because of the 1348 requirement that you have to enter into T I F sharing agreements with the overlapping jurisdictions of where you put the U R A. So typically, in most cases, that's a school district, a municipality's property tax potentially, a county's property tax, and then special districts, including fire, water, et cetera. So when you're forming an urban renewal authority, having good communications with each of those jurisdictions is really important. Rick touched on the fire district. I think a lot of my experience, it's typically fire districts or library districts that will come with complaints typically, at least in my experience, that an urban renewal authority is taking away taxes from those really important jurisdictions. And ultimately, that's not quite true. Typically, U R As are much smaller geographically than, let's say, a fire district. So there's a geographical size consideration. And ultimately, if you don't have T I F, then you may not have the incentive to attract the development, right? As Angela said with that but for argument, you know, you want that T I F as an incentive to attract that development. And development typically rises all ships. The other thing to note about fire districts in particular is if they come to the U R A on a particular project and say, hey, you know, we're going to be stretched beyond our operational capability, there are agreements that can be made on the backend as well, okay? With fire districts and other jurisdictions. The U R A plan is another particular important document. And then lastly, I'll say that T I F never comes as fast as you'd like it to, okay? And ultimately, it depends on a lot of factors, including entitlement. Construction risk is typically the biggest risk that my clients kind of encounter or deal with. And that's a risk that's can be challenging for a U R A or D D A to manage. But ultimately, you know, if you plan well, you know, you can anticipate when that T I F will come in. And hopefully, you're budgeting or projecting on a conservative basis. Certainly, that's my approach so that when more dollars come in, it's gravy or cherry on the top. I really appreciate your time. I'll conclude my section of the presentation and happy to answer any questions in a few minutes.
Yeah, thanks so much, Troy and Angela. That was a lot. So let me check in with you guys and see if there's any questions or things that might have popped up from either of the speakers that have presented so far here tonight.
I have a question. How do you tell, they have to establish that there's that funding gap. How do you tell if that's a legitimate funding gap or if it's just bad budgeting, I guess? How do you, I mean, what do you consider a good basis for providing that support as far as that goes?
I would be accused by some of my colleagues for paying you to lobby that question because it's a great, great question. For me, forgive me, I've got something in my throat. Forgive me. Hey, Bill, can you just volley for just 10 seconds?
I'll do what I can. So, yeah, that's, again, one of the first things, and Rick spoke about this, but having a group like Ricker Cunningham, who's a third-party, unbiased organization, come through and do their assessment brings a measure of validity to it, right? That there's not, and not to say that doing an in-house assessment, you know, wouldn't work. I mean, Jim's more than capable. I've got plenty of experience working with him on this stuff. But, you know, when you remove either party from the analysis and come up with an objective number, it really does a lot more to stand up, not only just to the relationship with the private sector developer asking for the money, but to the public, right? And so there's no perspective that there's anyone who's really trying to play games with that number. So Rick or Troy, if you have any...
No, no, that's absolutely right. And I actually think Bill was probably better suited to answer that as I avoided a coughing fit there because I certainly don't want my answer to seem self-serving. But yeah, that's the role of kind of what I do for some of my clients is to suss out those applications, right? And in fact, some of my policy documentation requires third-party review so that you can have that independent set of eyes. And typically, I'm very conservative. So those are conversations that you ultimately have after a review analysis is done.
And so then, like, for, wonderful answers, thank you. And then, so for the Canyon City example, is it, so they had anticipated that they had a gap, and then the neutral person, am I correct, that they actually said you have a bigger gap than you think you do? And then they went from there? Okay.
Yeah, and that kind of, honestly, it shook the board the first time. Because, you know, the board then looked at the consultant and said, come on, you're just being like a Denver guy that, you know, you're throwing Denver rates at this stuff. But on another project, the Pharisee Ford one, you know, you've got this dilemma of, so you've got the gap. The gap is a financial number that's created through this process. What qualifies? What actually qualifies as reimbursable? And in a couple of the projects that we have, unbridled, or excuse me, the Hotel St. Cloud being one, and Pharisee being another, I went through, line by line, through their construction projects with them to say, yes, this qualifies, this qualifies. And it's amazing how close that came to the actual gap that was determined. that was determined in the application. So that was another thing that made me go, oh, this really works, you know? It kind of makes sense financially.
Also throughout there, you know, for you all, that, you know, having a conservative report come back from a third party can really help in some respects because you want everyone to sort of, you know, you don't want to see developers unjustly enrich themselves through a project, right? But you also want to see that they have viable chances at success, right? And if they're giving you an overly rosy projection, that can, I mean, especially if you have policies like Troy is talking about that protects the town's money and you're only going on a reimbursement type, you know, basis, it's really nothing that you're putting the town's money at risk at. But if they're overly rosy and they come in and try and do a projection and it comes a couple of years and they're not able to really make it work, you might be left with a project that's either partially completed or it's not done to the level that you expected. And you know, that doesn't really serve anyone very well either, right? And so this is one of those things where, in my experience, it's really best just to be as upfront and honest as possible, right?
And I would add too, that if you don't have, you know, it's one thing to be overly rosy, but if you don't have the support or, we'll just call it the support of the assessor. The assessor doesn't buy into the value that is going into this property, then the assessment may not turn out to be what you anticipate. We had, I had the opportunity to take a look at the Pharisee Ford assessed value and increment compared to what we anticipated. And it was oddly right on. Based on their, remember, they had that, what was it? External obsolescence factor? Well, that external obsolescence was the exact amount that was devalued by the assessor. So it actually kind of worked out that way. But if the assessment doesn't come in the way you anticipated coming in, then you're going to have a potentially a shortfall in tax increment. So it's ironically, the property owner's desire to have high property tax on his property, which is kind of counter to what people say around here, you know? But it's, they want to have high property taxes so that they can get the increment out of it.
I was just going to finish this stream of consciousness with some of my projection work. Actually, programming and projecting a specific vertical construction, that's kind of the generally easier part. It's all the other factors that Rick touched on, mainly the assessor, okay? And how much incremental valuation you will get from a development versus base valuation. Because as our chart showed, base valuation does grow, okay? At least in a simple kind of illustrative projection, it does. And in reality, it does. And a lot of my management around projecting revenues isn't necessarily the construction part. It's trying to put my mind in the mind of an assessor and say, how much is going to go to increment, how much is going to go to base, et cetera? And then we've had changes in our assessment ratios, which also complicates projections. But as long as you're conservative, as we've discussed, and you appropriately haircut those future revenues, that's a good way to risk manage your revenues going forward.
And I think it's also important to point out that the purpose of TIF is to pledge back what the development is going to generate. So if it never actually ends up generating anything, usually the way that these agreements are structured, the urban renewal authority isn't actually out any dollars that it has because those dollars had never materialized. So when the agreements work that way, the risk is relatively low because you're essentially saying, if you create it, you may have it. And if you don't, then, sorry, tough luck.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't have any questions on the presentation. Thank you all for the presentation, but I have questions related to ours, which will probably be, you know, another discussion.
So I have a question about ROI. So I'm going to use the St. Cloud as a reference point. And I'm not a CPA or a tax expert in any way, shape, or form. So the St. Cloud was given a TIF in the amount of 2.8 million. And it's supposed to be opening early in 2025. At what point in time will the community receive 100% of that 2.8 back?
The Hotel St. Cloud was, is in an agreement for 1.2 million?
1.2, I'm sorry.
2.8 was the gap. But we've calculated it out to 10-year reimbursement, provided they can generate the tax. Primarily, it's going to be property tax increment. And the ROI is, it's, how do you, well, you know, I think about, how do you create economic impact analyses on any project, really? I mean, there's so many different ways that we're benefiting from the hotel before it's even open.
Right, but it's costing you 1.2 million dollars to get it open.
It's not costing the city really anything. It's got to create the increment to get it. So it's kind of like making money out of nothing to some extent. Because we don't have, we don't have the 1.2 in a bank account that we're going to give him. He's going to generate the tax increments. That'll come to the URA and then we'll reimburse it back to him.
The feds give the money upfront, right?
It's a subsidy, but somebody's getting paid back at some point. This money isn't materializing out of thin air.
Well, this is where it's the magic, but it's not magic. You're taking a property that was worth X. Now it's worth X plus a factor, and you're using the factor as an incentive to cause the factor to be created. And, you know, in the case of the Canyon City project, if I recall correctly, it's a 10-year payback period. That's the maximum that they're going to allow the payment, that 1.2 million. If it pays back in eight years, great, it pays back in eight years. If in year 10, it's only paid back $900,000, that's all it's going to pay back. It's no longer a 1.2 million incentive. The incentive itself is just, it's part of the financing stack to get the project off the ground. And get it, you know, from the private sector perspective, that it has a return on investment that meets the requirements of the people that are actually investing in the project.
Yeah, and this is a reimbursement incentive. It's not an upfront cash incentive. So they're not getting anything upfront from us. But the flip side of this is if that building that honestly sat for 20-plus years vacant and falling apart, what was the cost of that? And what would the cost of that be moving forward? The fact that we now have, what, three new restaurants, four new bars, 15, 12 new residential units that all were inspired by or incentivized, not incentivized, but catalyzed by this project. And the amount of vibrancy we have downtown right now, this was, it's hugely worth 1.2 million dollar reimbursable incentive.
And that's what I understand from Troy, which is better for us to secure it on a developer agreement more so than on bonds or loans. Because in the agreement, you can put clauses in there to help secure that you would potentially get the reimbursement back, depending on the time that you put in, that you're going to be receiving the reimbursement or whatever restrictions we put it on the contract. Since we are based on that.
And that's why we keep inviting Troy to these parties.
Yeah, I mean, there are ways to risk manage a bond issuance, but at the end of the day, you protect yourselves a little bit more with a reimbursement agreement.
The other, I guess you could say, benefit from, which I didn't touch on too much, but the Hotel St. Cloud led to, directly to, an investment group buying a planned development area that was really kind of a zombie development that had been in existence for 30 years but hadn't done anything. And because of the investment into the Hotel St. Cloud and the catalyst effect it's going to have on our downtown, that investment group, a new investment group purchased that 1,200 acres or 1,700 acre parcel that is now doing a major planned development amendment to turn that into something new as well. So the catalyst effect is pretty impressive right now. And that was another, it was another 38, 30, not 30 acre, it was a 30-year development that sat there stagnant, doing nothing, unmarketed, and you know, and maybe 5% of it built out in 20-plus years. So there's a whole lot more vibrancy right now economically, not just downtown, but investment-wise as well. That really was spearheaded by Unbridled doing this project at the Hotel St. Cloud. And just the fact that we as a community now show investors that we are willing to incentivize. They want to know that we're willing to incentivize. That's always been the first thing that anybody's ever asked me when they've come to town. Do you have any money you can help me? And it's like, typically, the answer was, no, we have a facade grant, but that's not going to help you build a new building, you know, that kind of thing. But if we're willing to invest in ourselves through this kind of a process, then it opens up a lot of eyes on our community for investment.
Well, and if the St. Cloud doesn't end up generating the 1.2 million dollars, the URA is not out of anything. So you, I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can measure ROI. I'm actually, ROI, I'm actually going through this exercise with a DDA client of mine right now. And for me, you know, having the incentive for the, you know, the startup money to set up a URA, that's kind of your initial investment, right? So anything generated above then is gravy. So, you know, the fact that Canyon City has a URA and they were able to help get this project off the starting block, to me, there's the value of a URA because the property may not generate that 1.2 million. And then actually, URA ended up helping bring in that hotel. And because the development didn't produce as it was projected and agreed upon, that to me puts the URA in a better position to say, hey, this is how we can leverage this resource.
And I have conversations with the owner all the time about the building. I mean, he's got, you know, we had, he proposed it as 11.6, 11.8 roughly. He's at 17-plus right now. You know, he's thinking, why did I ever do this, honestly? The building itself is now basically a new building with the existing, the original facade, the original brick around it. I mean, they had to basically, except for maybe the second floor and the third floor and fourth, they had to completely redo the foundation, they had to completely take out the first floor. So structurally, this building is going to be around for the next 100 years, you know, and long after any of us is gone.
So is, do you utilize of the three structures, if you're looking to incentivize development on a particular piece of parcel, do you use any URA? But if what you're really wanting to do is build community infrastructure that's not specific to a parcel, do you look to a different structure to do that?
Infrastructure not specific to a parcel, that's a little bit of a challenge for us. We want them in the, this Four Mile Ranch that we were talking about, most of that is not in the existing area. So now we're talking about creating a new area or more than one area for them.
I think the question is more of, let's say, what your town really needs is a public parking area. Because that, you think that's what's going to incentivize development. But that's not, you're not going to get specifically large amounts of increase in taxable value to any of the surrounding structures immediately. How do you, is there a distinction as to how you try to produce community goods as opposed to goods for a specific parcel?
I think in those cases, we would look at the traditional divisional local governments, CDOT grants, anything we could possibly get to get that kind of infrastructure, unless it directly benefited the URA area in one form or another. We've got one project, this Four Mile Ranch project I was talking about, there's a requirement for another 1 million gallon tank, water tank. How do we do it? Because it's not in the area right now. We don't have a mechanism at the moment to do it, with the exception of whether we could generate, use increment generated in the existing area to support the development of that tank because it serves the existing area. That's one way that we're looking at doing it. We're still going to work it out, work it through, most likely the developer. But that's seriously what we're looking at as a mechanism to do that. So if you can argue that your parking garage, we need one too. But if you can argue that it serves your community and you can generate the increment to create it, then great, but it's going to be through increment caused by, increment in your area, I guess, you know?
Well, that's right. So I, you know, I'm talking to a DDA about wanting to put in an art center. And I believe an art center is an absolutely vital community asset. But it won't produce one red cent of tax increment. So as Rick just said, you have to have something kind of catalyzing around that particular asset, right? To help pay for it or a portion of it. And so for me, you need that existing tax increment. You know, I've also seen some clients of mine say, hey, you know, this parcel would be great for a park. Can we reimburse you some money to help build us the park? So that's kind of the power of this tool is negotiating power. And I encourage all my clients to always ask for stuff. The worst you can get is no.
We are out of time, yeah.
Well, let me have Bill wrap this up real quickly. Bill, can you wrap us up real quickly? We're buttoning up against our regular board of trustees meeting.
I understand that, and I appreciate the questions and the conversation. I'll just, I'll echo that, you know, Silt is going to be in the challenge program with us here. So you're going to be working with us at DCI for quite a few months here coming up. And we're happy to continue the conversation and help you guys out. And I know that we've got some other workshops planned for you all as URA members. The 1348 was actually the one slide I wanted to make sure that we covered real quick for you. And I know that Angela had spoken about this real quick, but we just want to be clear that if there's going to be any new areas that are established, it's my understanding that the Silt URA is currently not 1348 compliant, which means that if there was a new development area that's considered or re-informed, you would have to move into being 1348 compliant. And what that means is bringing on three additional members from other taxing entities that receive sales tax, or I'm sorry, not sales tax, property tax from the potential area so that they would be serving on the board. And this has been something that's been in place since 2016. And a lot of you are, well, every URA who's done a project since then has had to be compliant. But we found folks, you know, we talked this whole time about building those relationships with those other taxing entities, and we've advised around that. And really, that's what this is to do, is to bring those folks to the table, make sure that they're a part of the process early and often, and that they fully understand the metrics and the financing about what's going on within these sort of projects. This just guarantees that they're going to be at the table. So this is a really key element if you're going to be creating a new area. And again, it's all about identifying those folks that you want, make sure are a part of it, the fire district, Troy has mentioned, the county schools, or some other, you know, district. The two by statute, Angelo, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the county and the school district that must be there.
One special district, right?
Special districts, yes.
Special districts, yes.
And then, and then the third one is, is going to be a, a representative of the other special districts that are there. Yeah, so, um, yeah, just be sure that you're aware of that. And, um, the rest of the slides, uh, contain some information about upcoming events that D C I has got, uh, going on for you. Some of the questions that y'all were asking, the commissioners, you guys were asking some really great questions that would really justify du- diving into this a little bit more. So, uh, please be aware that we've got resources and online webinars that are going to be, um, really addressing these, uh, points for you. Please keep an eye on that. Yes, the capacity assessment. Jim, I think we've got eight so far. So thank you very much, you guys, for, for stepping that, uh, up. As you can see, the results there. Um, throughout the challenge program, we're going to be talking about this new tool and using it to really help, uh, guide the activity and, uh, strategy going into, um, what y'all are doing there for redevelopment. Um, but if you haven't completed this capacity assessment yet, uh, please talk to Jim or, or get a link from me. Uh, we'd really appreciate getting your perspective on how you think the town is set up when it comes to, uh, doing economic development. And we're going to show you how to use this tool and really inform you guys as a community going forward with that. So that's, that's the speedy version. Um, we're, we're not go- we're not going away. Again, we're a member-based organization, so we're always available for you. And, uh, we'll be planning another workshop with you guys here, uh, at the beginning of the year. So I look forward to keeping the conversation going and, uh, just want to give it another big thanks to Rick, Angela, and Troy for, you guys are all-stars, you all doing amazing work in your role and, uh, really appreciate you spending the time here to help Silt out here tonight.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll be in touch soon.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Can I go pee?
Still got a hot mic.
Maybe a brief.
I'm going to get the bathroom.
Never worked.
Yeah, kick off the proceedings.